On?
We're on.
Welcome tonight, everybody, to the City of Tomwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, 7 o'clock. Meeting. Um, I'll call and go. Starting minutes, Commissioner. Here.
Here.
Commissioner Schumacher is excused. Vice Chair Sullivan.
Hi, I'm here.
Commissioner Tobias is excused. Commissioner Barrell?
Here.
And me, Commissioner Raul. Thanks, everybody. Um, are there any changes to our agenda? Um, so to our meeting minutes from July 11?
Move to be approved minutes from July 11.
That was Commissioner Barrell, and I think I heard that from. Um. All in favor of approving our minutes from July 11? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. District report. Any? Managers' report.
A couple of things. A little update on where we are with the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Uh, we have met with WFW, Washington Fish and Wildlife, yesterday to sort of talk about potential impacts of the new code requirements and animal and vegetative habitat. Um, we're still trying to figure out how to make all that work together. Um, we are also still in the process of completing our new mapping of the city based on the requirements uh, that are in the, in the memo that I sent you. Um, we're hoping that those mapping exercises will result in a little bit tighter map than what we currently have, meaning less of the city is potentially covered or needs to be covered by the requirements. But we'll, we'll see what happens when we actually get that data back. Uh, what that means is all of our urban forestry updates are still on hold until we finish that process. Um, once we have gotten a little farther, feel a little more comfortable, we will restart the process, give everybody plenty of notice, and get the joint meeting scheduled again. Uh, second item is, uh, we, for your next meeting, first meeting in August, we'll be talking about the water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater capital facilities plans, updates. Um, so that was a new one that was added after your packets went out. Um, and I think that's all the updates I have on, on that. Oh, oh, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about that during my item. Sorry.
Okay.
I was all, there's an exciting thing. Well, exciting to me, probably, but that's just. Uh, we applied for our Commerce Grant today for the comp plan update. So we're now in the queue. Hopefully, we'll get funding notice next month. That means we can hire somebody to help us with the transportation plan and the economic development plan, so.
Um, it, those are pretty sure saying crazy.
Yeah, it's just a matter of them sending us the contract and getting it all worked out.
Um. See, um, Brad, do you, do we have anybody here? Yes. Um, the representative, I can't see a name, but if, if the representative from the Jolt News would like to address the, please introduce yourself by name. For you, just right.
Okay.
As you hear, nevertheless. Um, Brad, did you hear from anybody else?
No. We didn't have any other public comments related to the topics that we're discussing tonight.
Um, let's move on to item number eight, our hazards mitigation.
All right. I'm going to be presenting about the hazard mitigation plan, specifically the City of Tomwater Annex. Once Brad gets that up.
Okay.
There you go.
And Megan, we're gonna move you off into the corner. I hope that's okay.
All right, we can go to the next slide. All right. So Thurston region, specifically the City of Tomwater, is prone to multiple natural hazards. Um, hazard mitigation plan is for the, is part of a multi-jurisdictional process to mitigate and reduce the risks of destructive hazards that threaten the region specifically. Yep, we can go to the next one. And these are the three types of mitigation. There's preparedness, response, and mitigation. The hazards mitigation plan contains the city's strategies for preparedness, response, and mitigation. Staff has been working with the fire department, City of Tomwater Fire Department, City Water Resources, City Parks and Recreation, Transportation and Engineering, and Communications to create initiatives that involve all three strategies. Preparedness includes supplies, training, and equipment. Response is actions taken during an emergency. And mitigation is actions taken prior to an emergency to reduce impacts, damage, or severity. A little bit of a background. The Disaster Mitigation Act helps state, territorial, tribal, and local governments proactively plan to reduce the damage from natural disasters. The city must have a federally approved plan to apply for or receive FEMA assistance grants. Our current plan was last updated in 2017. Staff is working with the Hazard Mitigation Work Group and Thurston County Regional Planning Council to update our regional mitigation plan and our individual jurisdiction plans, also known as an annex. The city has an annex, um, that specifically addresses hazards that are present in the city. Yeah.
Okay, so does that mean, are we behind right now? If it was last updated in 2017 and every five years, so we're still, okay, it doesn't like wait or anything?
No, we're, we're part of a much larger, everybody in Thurston County is sort of doing the whole plan at once. Um, and then we have a, an appendix to it called an annex that sort of talks specifically about some of our strategies. But we're still really deep in the main discussions and all that, so we're, we're definitely all together on this. And we're fine. We've, we've been meeting monthly since last year.
Yeah, we started, it was February of 2022. Yeah, so as long as we're on schedule with TRPC, Thurston County Regional Planning, um, we should be okay. Yep. All right, we can go to the next one. We are working with over 20 local agencies in Thurston County to update the plan. Uh, the workgroup meetings are facilitated by TRPC. Uh, they are the lead on creating the regional plan. The workgroup meets monthly. Uh, over the last year and a half, the workgroup has gone over risks, uh, risk assessments, new federal update requirements, initiative prioritization, and benefit cost reviews. Um, there is a website where you can find information up on the screen there that goes over the regional plan and has all of the 2017 plans. Uh, we do have a projected plan adoption date of December 2023, so December of this year.
Those local agencies are everything from the city, the county, school districts, fire districts, and special districts like lot. Cover a lot of different things.
There, is there a date when that has to be completed by?
Uh, probably, we would like to get it soon, as soon as we can around the December date because it lines us up well for federal funding. And for mitigation efforts, not say for left, there's an emergency or something. That, that's a different matter. This is more preparedness side of grants.
And this screen kind of goes over the plan update participants. There's the public and community stakeholders, so that would be the citizens and the businesses. Technical partners would be TRPC and hiring Tetra Tech. Uh, they performed our regional risk analysis. Uh, the regional risk analysis was an evaluation of, um, this, each of the jurisdictions and the Thurston County region, and it assessed what hazards, um, the highest risk hazards, medium risk hazards, and low risk hazards for each jurisdiction. Um, they collected the data and information needed for the update. Plan partners would be City of Tomwater and the individual departments. Like I was saying, we've worked with the fire department, communications, parks and recreation, water resources, and transportation. Uh, the project manager is, uh, TRPC. And the workgroup is city staff and staff from the other jurisdictions. And regulatory is Thurston County Emergency Management. And then the final, uh, the final draft actually goes to FEMA for their approval. All right. So this is some information about the City of Tomwater perceived concerns to hazards by our residents.
This, uh, I agree the title, because they.
Thurston County Communities Natural Hazards and Resilience Survey. And specifically, this is the Tomwater Region's results. An online survey format was used to conduct the first round of public input. The survey was available to the public from June 6th through July 31st last year in 2022. The survey included 12 questions about perceived risks and preferred mitigation activities. Um, these results are based on 55 responses received from respondents within the City of Tomwater. So it looks like our respondents, our citizens, are most concerned with earthquake, climate change, wildfire, followed by extreme heat.
Army one, which is not concerned about at all. Um, I'm wondering, uh, does the, does the broader regional plan assess, um, if people retreat into our area, if they are, say coastal people that, uh, might. That, is that part of the, you know, how do we deal with an influx of, say, large numbers of people?
So, the Thurston Regional Plan is for Thurston County, so it would mostly probably affect jurisdictions like Olympia, the City of Olympia that is on the water. Um, I know they are addressing sea level rise through their plan, and part of the Thurston Regional Plan is addressing that. Um, we haven't cross-referenced in our individual annex for that, but, um, yeah, we can follow up.
We haven't addressed either, like, large rates.
Like, I'm imagining if there were, there was some sort of a.
On the, right. So we don't, we wouldn't address the, say, an emergency of that nature, like, or if there's a giant Cascadia earthquake or similar, you know, all those kinds of things that cause movement. The mitigation plan is really sort of intended to focus on things we can do now to reduce the effects of particular, um, natural hazards occurring in the Thurston region. So we don't, this doesn't focus on what happens and how do we manage population movements if there's a, you know, one emergency situation.
All right. And, uh, the primary contents of the plan. Um, as part of the plan, uh, there's multiple sections. Uh, there's a community profile, which is a breakdown of our demographics, housing, employment, income, and development activity. Uh, the capability assessment, uh, is a jurisdiction's unique, unique set of capabilities and tools that can be leveraged to support hazard mitigation. For instance, our comprehensive plan, capital facilities plan, um, code updates. Um, and there are specific plans and actions that support hazard mitigation. This is a new FEMA requirement, um, that was adopted this year. Uh, we have to provide documentation to FEMA how all of our plans, code, and, um, updates relate to the hazard mitigation plan. Uh, the risk assessment is an evaluation of each jurisdiction's hazards, the probability multiplied by the weighted impact to people, property, and economy. Uh, we do have a summary for the City of Tomwater on the next slide. Jurisdictions must have at least one mitigation action for each hazard. The previous plan only required one action, uh, per each hazard ranked high. So, um, it is different this year. There was two new updates to the plans this year. Um, there's a few types of mitigation initiatives. There's the currently adopted and what we are carrying over from the last update in 2017. There's completed, um, the work that has been done, the measures that have been, um, yeah, completed. There's the new 2023 that are proposed, and the future land use plan zoning and development regulations. This is a breakdown for the City of Tomwater's hazards. You probably can't see it that well, um, but low is green. So for the first one, dam failure, we have low, and that's a zero. So per the assessment from Tetra Tech, uh, there was no risks to property, um, people, and the economy from dam failure. Um, the next one over is earthquake. We are ranked high for earthquake hazard. Um, so definitely have addressed that in our 2023 plan. Uh, the third column there is flooding. So we got a low rating for risk of flooding. It's primarily along the banks of the Deschutes River. Then we have landslide. We actually have a medium risk for landslide hazards. Again, that's in the area around Deschutes and where we have some mapped unstable soils. The next one would be sea level rise. We got zero for that, so our plan is not addressing sea level rise. Um, severe weather, uh, that could be wind, um, could be heat storms. Um, we, uh, we're ranked medium for that, so that is a medium hazard. We are addressing that in the 2023 update. The next one is tsunami, that's zero, so we don't have one, any initiatives for tsunami. We are actually ranked low for volcano Lahar, but we are addressing that for ashfall. There isn't an initiative in our plan for ashfall. And then the last one there is wildfire, and that is a medium risk. And, um, based on the WUI and our tree and vegetation preservation, we have addressed quite a, we have implemented quite a few initiatives in this year's plan.
These are, the dam failure just kind of reminds me probably less likely than, or more likely than, uh, tsunami would be, like, if a quality bridge failed. And then the traffic impacts and the secondary collisions and all the mayhem that would probably hit Tomwater as people get backed up. Like, the other day, it backed up to Tomwater while we had that accident on Mount Road.
Mm-hmm. Trying to find the alternate route.
And then Yelm got all sideways because of the second. So.
Yeah, the way that, uh, Tetra Tech evaluated the hazards was based on impact to the economy, people, and structures. So we didn't necessarily look into, like, traffic or maybe having to relocate people into other jurisdictions. But yeah, um, there would be, like, cities like Yelm's involved, Buchanan's involved, um, uh, Lacy's involved, so they might have initiatives that do address the dam failure, and it could potentially impact us through traffic and stuff like that. But I don't think our risk assessment kind of calculated those factors when looking at risks or impact to the city.
The Lahar in particular, with the exception of the ash component, is really focused on the Squali Valley. And we're the next one over, and we're fortunately, you know, the Deschutes doesn't come right off the mountain, so we don't have to worry about that. And then the one dam that I'm aware of on the Deschutes is way upriver. And any impact, if that goes, would probably dissipate pretty well by the time it gets down to us. That's the reason behind what we're looking at for that.
Yeah, the, the regional plan does, I think, address or notes that we all should work together, um, for some of the possible effects, but, um, yeah, we could look into that more. Uh.
Kind of an interesting point, and, and maybe one that I, if we can encourage that, because I, you know, there's the, there's the incident itself, whatever that is. But then there's these sort of ramifying effects, um, like Commissioner Van Holt's Brad, that something could happen somewhere that disrupts the rest of everything else, which, you know, the initial trigger might not have been in our immediate area, but it's gonna affect us. So it would be worth figuring out where that kind of, um, analysis and thought and mitigation ideas.
Yeah, and I'm more than happy to look into the regional plan. We do have, um, the draft initiatives for the Thurston region as a whole, um, which addresses all the hazards for all the jurisdictions and is, um, kind of looking, yeah, at all the jurisdictions and how it affects every, so, yeah, I can look into that, too. All right. So now we're gonna dive into some of the initiatives. Um, this is going to be a mixture of the 2017 that we're carrying over and our new proposed in the 2023. Um, the first one we are doing is earthquake. That was our only high-ranking risk, um, out of all the hazards that we saw on a previous slide. So the first one, uh, conduct a voluntary non-structural earthquake readiness inspection for all critical facilities on an annual basis. So Tomwater staff will ensure all critical facilities are prepared for the possibility of an earthquake. An annual inspection should be completed. So that includes city hall, um, the city police department, the fire stations, um.
The water facilities.
Yep.
Water, the main water facilities in town. The, the other thing to keep in mind is when we're looking at, these are Tomwater-specific initiatives. The broader community, regional initiatives cover a lot of the other things that we've been talking about in terms of preparedness. So these are the specific things we want to also focus on.
And then?
Harry has a question. Items in the 2017 plan, are there any examples where we. FEMA to do these things, or these things?
We took them on ourselves. I don't, we didn't apply for any grants or anything to support what we needed to do, um, because I don't think, number one, that rose to the level of us needing a lot of money to do them. That was the primary thing. So, um, no, we didn't, we didn't use FEMA funds for any of these.
In our initiative, it does have, um, the lead staff that will be working on the initiative. So for this one in particular, it was staff departments, like the fire department, um, also our facilities. Um, so we're still, we asked for input and kind of like the status on the initiative. When was the last time they did the inspections? And what the cost would be, whether it was staff hours or it actually had to come out of a budget. So.
Um, can you quickly distinguish the term critical facilities versus?
Infrastructure would be anything road-related primarily.
Roads, produce water systems.
It's sort of a, yeah, it's sort of a between position because some of the critical facilities, like our, our main, um, water wells, are, are considered critical facilities, but some of the abutnances, like the main trunk lines and so forth. We tend to have all that fall under critical facilities because those are a little bit different animal than the infrastructure side, which is where primarily roads and everything, and bridges and all that. So that's, that's kind of the distinction it's made.
So like water towers, our facilities and.
Yeah, yeah.
Water sewer lines and.
Yeah.
But for the, for our purposes, um, you know, the, it's, we focus primarily on the main facilities of those types, so like the main water lines, the main, so say in the neighborhoods, that's, we'll deal with those, but they're not a primary concern.
And then they're, they're mostly, we're, we're mostly treating them, you know, kind of, uh, in tandem, if you will. They're addressed, we're not, the distinction isn't.
It doesn't alter that we need to pay attention to everything, is what it comes down to.
And with this, we are kind of, um, addressing them through our water system plan, our comprehensive plan update. Um, we are tying it into a lot of other work that Brad and I and all the other departments are working on. Um, that's how, yeah, that's a FEMA requirement now, showing how we're actually gonna do this, how we're proposing to do these initiatives, more showing our work. Yeah, yeah. Um, then we're also gonna have, proposing to have a professional engineer, otherwise qualified person assess infrastructure for earthquake vulnerability, retrofitting, replacement of critical systems, and the capital improvement plan, uh, capital facilities plan. Um, and install auxiliary generator power to the city main well, oh, to power the city main well and water supply. That one is new. Um, I think it's the Palermo well, um, specifically. Uh, the next, Sarah, did you have a question?
Backup generators sound great, but when you're putting a generator in for. Years. On. And actually placement, you know, generator. Purpose. Assets. Needs to be taken. Or something like that. It might be better to have one spare generator that you can put on the back of a truck and take it to. Other than that. Backup something.
All right.
You have to sort of. A fuel for this.
More job.
The fuel.
The wheelhead is they've got, they've probably got to test it on, test the generator on frequent, uh, process. They have to make sure. Tools changed out. Use. Whole list of the events associated with backup generators.
If I recall, at the Palermo well site, there is a, a fuel storage already in place. Um, so I'm, I'm sure the, the intent would be to use that as our primary source of whatever we need if we either have the generator on site or bring one in.
All right. So on the screen here, we have some of, well, these are the initiatives for wildfire. Um, we are carrying one over from the 2017 plan, which is establishing fire breaks and routine maintenance on Tomwater Hill. Uh, there is some city property up there, and there is the newly created city park and the elementary school. Uh, Tomwater Hill is at high risk for wildfire due to the slopes, vegetation, tree cover, and surrounding development. Um, establishing fire breaks next to the new houses and periodically cutting the remainder of the brush would help minimize damages in the event of a localized wildfire. Um, then we have adopting the Washington Wildland Urban Interface Code, uh, which we've been referring to as WUI. Uh, the International Building Code and International Residential Code to meet WUI requirements. Update the City of Tomwater map to show the Wildland Urban Interface map layers to coincide with the 2023 Building Code update. Uh, this will help reduce the loss of life and property due to wildfires. Uh, the WUI establishes minimum state requirements for land use and built environment and designated wildlife. Wildland Urban Interface areas. The requirement includes specific fire-resistant materials for structures and limiting the amount and type of trees and vegetation within the defensible space, which is thirty to one hundred feet of structures. The map will help developers and homeowners to see if they are at these high-risk areas or at-risk areas for the Wildland Urban Interface and whether these new codes apply to them. And then... routinely inspect functionality of fire hydrants. This is a new one, working with the fire, the city fire department. It's crucial, water is a key factor in suppressing fire, ensuring fire hydrants are functioning correctly and critical, correctly is critical, and reducing the spread of wildfires increases public safety. And then develop a vegetation management plan incorporating proper species selection, planting, and maintenance practices into our landscape code, which we've been talking about the last few months.
On wildfire, is there, is there already a provision or policy code about, you know, fireworks? I know they're banned in the city, but people still...
It's not something addressed in the hazard mitigation plan, or like the multiple sources of potential hazards, we don't address, we just, yeah, we don't address that.
Yeah.
It's an enforcement issue for us more than anything else. Education and enforcement. It has gotten a heck of a lot better.
Yes. Great.
Yeah, so, there's a routinely inspect the functionality of fire hydrants, is, is that not being done now? And what would routinely be compared to what's being done now if it is?
That's a great question. It just wasn't in our hazard mitigation plan previously. The fire department, I don't wanna speak out of terms, but they did send me a document. There is a process where they do have to have their fire hydrants inspected, I think, I don't wanna mistalk, like misspeak, but it was something to do with like, like coverage or like liability, maybe insurance. I can look into that and follow up, but it just wasn't in our mitigation plan, but fire hydrants are inspected. They also provided me the number of fire hydrants within the city of Tomwater. I just haven't incorporated that data into this presentation, so...
My fiance is a deputy fire marshal for Pierce County.
Okay, okay.
Which...
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was an initiative that I found in the FEMA mitigation handbook, so it was actually one that FEMA had proposed for wildfire, and I just thought it would be nice to get more information and actually implement that into our plan. I haven't completely updated everything yet, but there will be more information in the plan itself once it's ready. I'm still working section through section on it. But yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have more information on it, yeah.
Are there any areas of the...
That is a good question.
Don't believe so, then we can check. It's not been something, for example, whenever we have discussions about new development or anything, it's not, we don't have many, I don't recall any discussions about, we need, we don't have fire service to begin with, or water for fire service to begin with. It's usually cases of maybe we don't have a sufficient flow for particular uses in particular locations. So I think our coverage is there, but not necessarily the volume of the water we may need at all the times.
So now we are moving on to severe storm and severe weather. It is a medium-ranked risk for the city of Tomwater. We have four initiatives proposed. We are carrying over from the 2017 plan to inspect all trees within falling distance of the four city-owned critical facilities to determine if they pose a hazard. We do have, we do have a, in 2020, Water Resources, I believe, had a tree evaluation done by a staff person that went around the facilities and kind of evaluated the trees. They also went around the park and other city-owned facilities. But we are looking more to see, we're looking at getting a more in-depth inspection of the trees. And then reduce heat islands by implementing urban forestry code updates. Proper tree and vegetation planting and maintenance will help reduce effects of warming developed in developed areas known as heat islands. Increasing tree and vegetation cover lowers surface and air temperatures by providing shade and cooling and reducing the amount of energy needed to cool buildings, resulting in an improved reliability of the electric system, particularly during extreme weather events. Modify land use and environmental regulations to support vegetation management and activities and utility corridors. By updating land use and environmental regulations to support vegetation management and utility corridors, the risk of having critical infrastructure damage during a storm is reduced. The landscape code and other ordinances will be modified to encourage appropriate plantings, near overhead power cable and phone lines. I don't know about you guys, but I seems every winter I lose power a few times because of branches and everything like that, so I think we're familiar with that. And then assess feasibility of installing solar power and battery storage at City Hall and the Tomwater Library. City Hall and the library are critical facilities, and in event of a storm, solar power will help keep Tomwater City Hall and the police station functioning and in operation during a severe storm event. All right, there are more initiatives, I just didn't include them in the PowerPoint in the packet. I did include the list of all of them proposed along with their naming and ranking, so that is something you guys can take a look at. Our next steps here is on the screen. We are up at the top on the first column. So July 31st, the draft county-wide hazard profiles and risk assessment is due, July 24th through August 25th, all draft action plan, open house, oh, we'll have our draft action plan, and then that's when we'll start our open house and survey. Tomorrow, I will be working at the Thurston County Fair along with Thurston County Emergency Management at an informational booth, trying to promote the open house and survey and also promote the importance of being prepared, whether it's individually, also for the city of Tomwater's annex, and then regionally. And then by the end of August, we should have our risk assessments completed. September 1st, our draft core plan completed, going through September, our draft annexes. So that's when the draft annex for city of Tomwater should be completed. This is very flexible, or I should say, we are trying to stay flexible, but at the same time, we do want to get it done by December. Going down the screen here, by November, we want it sent off to FEMA. And Sep-, oh, September 23rd, that's a big date, we are having our emergency preparedness expo with emergency management. I do believe it's at Peter G. Schmidt this year, so on September 23rd.
I just have one quick question.
Yeah.
Once the plan is submitted to FEMA, it's, let's say it's approved, it's adopted, is there opportunities though to amend it after the fact for changes that may come up or things that maybe were not considered prior? Is there a process for that?
That's a good question, because our annex becomes part of a larger plan that's adopted, and everybody takes the same plan and adopts it. So making amendments to it is probably difficult, and that doesn't necessarily stop us from saying, saying, oh, we need to do this and doing it. This is really sort of a, this is our plan to give to FEMA to show them this is what we're gonna do. But if there are things that come up that we really should be considering or doing in the meantime, we are always capable, you know, we can always just go ahead and do it.
There's a little bit of flexibility there.
Yeah, yeah. This is sort of a snapshot to give to FEMA to say, this is all the things we're gonna do, and have that go forward. But, yeah, the really important part is just making sure we do things, and if there are things that we recognize we need to do, we do them. And we don't need a plan to do that.
And once it is submitted to FEMA, there is a possibility, possibility they'll send it back with revisions required. There is a checklist that they use.
Okay. So they will have some feedback potentially back to us.
Yep, yep. If there is any comments or concerns, or I would say definitely during this comment period coming up here, the open house, to provide comments that way. I did send off that list of the initiatives for public comment, it was provided to TRPC, so they are putting all the, all of the city of Tomwater initiatives together for comment during that period. So it's being launched here in a few days. I think we're working with communications to broadcast that public comment period as well. We're just waiting for the formal notification from TRPC. Yeah?
I'm really glad to hear that there's a public comment period outreach, like, or just things like that. After it's in place, I'm wondering if, is there kind of an opportunity to market that it exists somehow, to say, city of Tomwater is working for you, you know, we've got, this is what we have in mind to keep everybody safe, kind of a...
Yeah, that's definitely something we, we should do as part of our website and other educational things. TRPC will maintain the main plan and all the documentation on their site for the, for you know, the plan itself, so we'll definitely have one place to send everybody to with questions and so forth.
Yeah, there was a required public participation plan for this update process. The timeline that we saw on the screen didn't really capture everything, but, yeah, we, looks like the expo is gonna be a huge public comment period. The final public comment period is September 25th through October 8th, so that we can broadcast or promote that as well. I think it wouldn't be a problem. We should, yeah, we'll look into that, yeah.
Will the planning commission be seeing this again either before or after, uh, to FEMA?
We'll probably go directly to the council with the final version. At the same time, you will be seeing, whatever comes out of the hazard mitigation plan is part of the comp plan update. We're required to incorporate elements from that into the larger land use and, you know, all the other elements in the comp plan. So while you may not see the final, final version before it goes and gets adopted, you'll definitely see it again the next couple of years, so...
Last question, is, are you hearing anything from insurance underwriters?
Not specifically, but, you know, I, if you pay attention to the news and what's happening in California and Texas and Florida, it's definitely something big, big, I know, on our minds, and I think it's one of the, one of the motivators for the WUI code itself was to address those kinds of concerns. So, but no, we haven't heard anything and no, as part of our discussions with TRPC and the other jurisdictions, we're not aware of any specific things. You know, biggest thing in my mind would be an earthquake, most, and most costly damage would be from that, and it's been twenty-plus years since we've had one of any size, cross fingers. But, for those of us whose son was born the day after, I, I just don't want another earthquake because I'm not ready to feed another mouth at the moment.
No, no. Just cross it, no earthquake.
Yeah, and if you guys aren't busy tomorrow from two to six, I will be at the fair. Yeah.
Um, what you needed, Mark?
Yep, that's, that's the end of my presentation, definitely, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Um, let's move to item nine. I'm trying to figure out the grand, to get.
Okay, thank you again for hanging around for this. This will be occupying your time for the next two years. Hope you enjoy it. We had discussed at our last meeting the public participation plan and all the components for this. This is actually sort of getting into the nuts and bolts of what the planning commission will be focusing on as part of your work sessions and so forth over the next couple of years. We wanted to sort of go into detail, oops, first of all, there we go. We wanted to sort of give you an introduction to the whole, the whole update, the whole slew of things we have to address, and then also introduce you, more importantly, to some of the state guidance materials that are available to help you understand why we're doing things, to look at alternatives and all those kinds of things. We've been joking, half joking, that the state guidance materials are about seven hundred plus pages if you add them all up, and I'm trying not to, but I'm doing it sort of in my head. So there's a lot of stuff to address as part of this update. There's a lot of things that we'll be doing. We're gonna try to really break it down into bite-sized chunks as much as possible, but as we're having these kinds of discussions and so forth, what I'd like the commissioners to keep in mind and to make us aware is we're gonna be presenting information to you, we wanna make sure that, number one, you're, you understand what we're giving to you. If there's something you don't understand, let us know. Email, telephone, at the meetings, whatever. Because I assure you that there are things in here that I don't necessarily understand the first two or three or four times I read through it, and we're covering a lot of ground as part of this. Another thing to keep in mind is the best way for you as an individual commissioner to get information and absorb things, what, you know, what would work best for you, and we'll try to help you, we'll tailor what we give to you and into as much as we can that way. And most importantly, we need to get an idea from you in terms of how much time you have to really review outside of the meetings, these materials, because we don't wanna give you everything under the sun and expect you to know what's on page sixty-five, paragraph three, and if you don't know, you, we can't go forward. That's not gonna happen, but we just wanna make sure that we are, number one, giving you the appropriate amount of information, we're giving you a sufficient amount of time to absorb that, and if you have any questions at any point along the way that you feel comfortable asking, you know, for more information, more time, whatever. We have a schedule, we have a due date. I'm gonna, I don't wanna say I'm gonna tie my retirement to it because I've already made mistakes doing that already. We may have flexibility, because the legislature gave us a whole slew of new requirements this year that isn't covered in any of the guidance material I gave you. So we are, we're trying to absorb new things, at the same time, we're trying to absorb everything else that's been updated. Yes?
You told us earlier that the outcome of the update, something less, now, deeper than existing one that we have now. Is that a Tomwater goal or is that a...
That is a Tomwater goal. And what, what are... And what, what our requirements are to meet for the state requirements won't change. We'll still need to provide all the information the state's going to require. What we're trying to do is to present a document that's easier to, for the general public to absorb. Meaning we focus particular things in shorter documents. Like the, in my mind, the most important things going forward are our goals and policies and the general direction and all those kinds of things that policymakers, the commission and the public need to know. They don't need to know necessarily all the, how we got to that point, which is all the work that, that the state is going to require us to do. So our intent is to have separate documents dealing with, say, the land use element, policies and goals, and then all of the background material. So it, it, so we don't have to pick up an 80-page document to, to grasp the important details. You can get a much shorter document and, and deal with that way. So that's, again, I, I, we haven't had a change of direction with the new city administrator on that. I think she's still on board with that. She doesn't strike me as somebody who said, no, we need more detail, more appendices and, you know, no, I don't see that changing.
I'm just glad to hear that, but I wonder if this was something that we were doing ourselves or what?
It, it's something we're doing ourselves. We are following existing models that commerce has blessed before. A city of CTAC is one example that we, we've been liking what we've done. They are going to ask us to basically show how it's going to work before they see the whole thing. So we've built into our scheduled time to, to do that, prepare mock-up kind of thing of what it could look like and that kind of thing. Want to start by first explaining what we currently have, because what we currently have is what we're going to be updating. And it's a good idea to understand what that is made up of and also how the general, these are generally structured. So for our current comprehensive plan, we have a list of, of individual elements which cover discrete components of city development. Capital facilities plan, we've had discussions. That's the six-year plan that says, here are our list of specific projects. Here's how we're going to fund them over the six years and here's our schedule for doing so. Again, that is really sort of putting all the policies and goals of the plan into action. It's putting, you know, city putting its money, money down and saying, we're going to do this. The unspoken component of that is development, which is going to take and build the houses, the retail, the industrial, you know, all those kinds of things that's happening outside. We don't plan that, but what we plan is we, this is where we like it to occur and to this intensity. But the actual development itself is handled by the public or private sectors building. I'll go into detail what each of these elements cover a little bit later. But it's, it's important to note that our joint plan is also considered an element of our comprehensive plan. And our shoreline master program is also now officially a component of the comp plan. The items that are starred are things that we're not going to be updating as part of this current update. We just finished our update to the joint plan in 2021, so I don't see a need to update that. Even if we make dramatic changes, I think we're probably still very close. The shoreline master program, we are good to go until 2030. I don't want to reopen that. Just from personal preference and spending eight months waiting for ecology to review what we do. It's a time-consuming process. We have a very good plan right now. I don't see a need to update it. We don't currently have the resources to update the parks and rec plan. That is definitely something that we're in discussions with parks and the city administrator about doing so in the near future. But for the purposes of this update and this deadline, we're just not going to be able to, to do that. So that's the reason why that's excluded at the moment. The plan also includes a whole host of appendices. The neighborhood appendix used to be part of the land use element itself. It really is, each of the, the city is broken up into very large neighborhood units to try to, you know, characterize individual parts of the city in much more detail. I anticipate that element will, that portion of the land use plan will be updated. It may not be updated to the detail it's currently at, might be shortened. But it provides a lot of good background information for sort of the larger land use visions for communities. And it's important to understand that the, the policies and the goals and the comprehensive plan and the maps and everything, it not only serves a role of, of guiding expenditures or city dollars and guiding the development of development code and the, the maps, the zoning maps and everything else. It really also has a role in development review itself. Because it lays out in some cases, very specific visions for specific areas of the city. And those things have weight of law when it comes to project review. So some of our larger projects, we really have pulled from, directly from the comprehensive plan, in addition to all the development code that comes out as well, to say that thou shalt do this because. And it's defensible because it, this, there are comp plans more than just a good idea is what it comes down to. It does have more force of law than, than you may realize. Also included, our series of maps and our sub-area plans. We'll talk a little bit more about those as we move through this. Each of the current elements is structured about the same way. There are some differences, say, between the, the transportation plan and the land use plan in terms of how it's laid out, but they're fairly similar. Each one has a general introduction, explaining the background of the purpose of the element. First of all, it addresses the applicable growth management goals. There are 15 goals established by the Growth Management Act in the state. Those goals don't necessarily all work together nicely. You know, thou shalt develop so that, you know, economic development is addressed. At the same time, you protect the environment and the same time you build housing at the same, you know, you start to add a lot of things together that may or may not work together. However, we do talk about how that particular element addresses those specific goals in, in each of the elements. We also have what is known as the city, the county-wide planning policies, which are translation, basically a rulebook that we also have to follow when we develop and update our plans. It's, it's sort of the, not only the process, but it also deals with things like population allocation. You know, who does what at what point, who makes the final decision? What kind of information do they have to consider? What roles do the city have versus the county? Those kinds of things are all spelled out in the county-wide planning policies. They also deal with the urban, the urban growth areas. So the city itself, plus our urban growth area, plus how we plan for those annexations, all that kind of stuff. Those things are laid out already in the county-wide planning policies. Sustainable Thurston was an effort that was about 10 years old now. But if you want to know sort of the roots of all the things that we've been talking about for the climate mitigation plan and low-impact design for stormwater and everything else, Sustainable Thurston really laid out in very extreme detail, a whole host of policies and actions about how we're going to develop countywide in, in a sustainable fashion. And I anticipate we will continue to include these policies in, in the plan because I think they're important. I think they're still valid. We've adopted it, so we, we need to address it. But I think it's a very valuable tool to help, you know, also guide things. In each of the plans is also a table of all the plans that the elements drew from. So for example, in our lands for public purposes element, which deals with our stormwater, our water system, our sanitary sewer system. The list of, of plans it draws from is everything from the Salmon Creek Basin Plan that was done for stormwater, you know, a few years back, to our water system, to our stormwater, you know, stormwater system plans, all these other things. So it's sort of a handy reference of how did we get to this point? What did we look at to get here is what it really means. So when you're looking at these individual elements, that should be a good guide and helpful thing to know, okay, where else could I go for additional information about how this is working? This is followed then by the technical discussion for each of the elements. And this is really kind of the show your work for the state part of the comp plan. In the case of the conservation element, we have a whole host of things we have to address. The agricultural lands, the forest lands and the mineral resource lands are all known as the resource land requirement of GMA. Unlike the county, which really has to deal with these things in much more detail, we don't have to. Except we do have one parcel that does have a forest credit part of it. So we have to talk a little bit about what that is being used for. That means it's used actively for forest purposes. We do have the, the mine in town, so we do have mineral resources, so we do have to address that. So five items below that are all the critical areas that we have to address in, in the city. We've, we first of all have, is part of the, the, the element. And then this is translated into our development code in title 16. And then there's a third section that deals with specific goals, policies and actions for that element. So in the conservation plan element, you'd have things like, the, the city shall, you know, update its, its wetland regulations on a regular basis following state guidelines. It shall use best available science, those kinds of things. And then if you want to see all of the, the current plan, this is the website to, to go to. It's a table that lists, actually, it's, it's, the new website is in place and it's actually a little bit easier to look through and, and function. Each of the things is a, a big friendly button to press. If you, if you see land use, you press land use and then it'll bring up the land use element itself, all the maps, all the appendices and so forth. So all of the things that were adopted and in place right now and have been amended through last year are all there. So that is number one resource to know where we start from. We're also going to be, we're working right now on the website for the update. And that, that website will include a library of guidance material for the public, for the commission to draw from. All of the things that we've been talking about or will talk about will be put on the website. We're also in discussions about having some form of library available online for the planning commission. So as we're discussing particular things, particular elements, particular whatever, you as a commissioner have a, you could pull down that most recent version, all those kinds of things. So there's one place to go to. Terry, we've been asked not to print any more pieces of paper. I know. Terry's 14 inches of current comprehensive plan. So we'll have that available as, as well. So each of the elements, very quickly, we talked about the capital facilities plan. We talked about the conservation element. Some of these are fairly self-explanatory. The economic development plan goes into great detail on policies and actions the city will do to really focus on things that it really wants to, this is Talmater specific. Anything dealing with brewery and distilling, for example, is a big section. We've got the Port of Olympia, the airport and all those properties. All the, you know, the kinds of jobs, the fact that we're, we have a lot of office jobs for the state. You know, how do we keep that? How do we grow that? All that's covered in the economic development plan. Housing element, again, deals with existing housing stock and ways of providing affordable housing to all economic segments. This is by far the biggest, you're, this is going to be the biggest change from the 2016 to the new version from all the state legislative action over the past three years. We talked a little bit about the joint plan. That just covers the areas outside the city that are within our urban growth area. Those are the areas that have the potential to be annexed at some point by the city. The land use element, which is the first one we'll take up, talks about our current and future land use throughout the city. That's, you know, everything in general from, for a single family or lower density residential relocated to multifamily to commercial, all those kinds of things. Plans for public purposes covers everything of the public nature needed for, outside of transportation for infrastructure. So solid waste, storms, sewer, fire, police, library, all those kinds of things are addressed. In some cases, like school facilities, it will point to the Talmater School District Plan or the Olympia School District Plan. We have a small portion of the city that's within the Olympia School District. But in other cases, for general city things, we'll be talking about those in this particular element. Talk a little bit about the shoreline master program. Now, the shoreline master program very quickly is applicable to anything that's within 200 feet of a state waterway. Or, and there's a whole bunch of caveats to expand that. But it basically is anywhere near the Deschutes River or Black Lake or the Black Lake Ditch. Or there's a, and there's a Barnes Lake, Mun Lake, or anyway, there are four or five lakes as well. So those areas are covered by the, the shoreline plan. Transportation plan is, is everything, dealing with how you get from one point to the other, from roadways, bicycles, pedestrian, all those kinds of things. It, it's been, it's, we've got a lot more things to add to the plan than we had previously. And then finally, the utilities element deals with the private side of infrastructure. So that's electricity, gas, cable TV, telecommunications and so forth. We basically have to inventory what's out there and who's providing it. There's not a lot of detail compared to the other plans, but it's a required element of what we have to address. So for the initial commerce guidance materials that I included in your packet, I've included three different things. The first is the guide to the periodic update process under the Growth Management Act. That is the introduction to why we do the update. And it covers a lot of the basics, from the, what we need to do from the public process side to the things that we need to focus on in a very general sense. It's a good place to start if you have questions about why we're doing this in the first place. The periodic update checklist for flowy planning cities is a document that I've been writing notes on the back of. But it's a 31-page list of everything through the end of, well, it says through March of '23, but it doesn't deal with the 12 legislative bills that were passed this year that deal with updates to the comp plan. So this thing is out of date already. But it is probably the easiest in one place to go to of all the things we have to address, not only to update the comprehensive plan, but also our development regulations, because we have to do both. So if you want to get a sense of what the requirements are and updates, we will be going through this as part of our gap analysis process, which will be starting tomorrow. Actually, on Thursday, when Erica gets back from the fair. Haven't told you that yet, haven't. Basically, we have to, basically make sure that all these particular items are either, we know where they exist in the current plan, what do we need to change to update to make sure it meets current regulations? And then a whole bunch of notes related to this. It's broken down by individual element. And in the, in the development code section, it has its own blue comprehensive plan, red, or burgundy? Burgundy, development code. There is a similar checklist that deals with critical areas, which are again, actions for habitat, steep slopes and wetlands and so forth. It's a much shorter checklist and we should be in fairly good shape with that because we've been keeping up with all the state updates as they occur. I think we're going to have to update our wetland code a little bit, but not a whole lot, thankfully. So those are the three things I've included in your packet. This is, again, this, I gave you a little background. They've, they've gone to these much more attractive covers for their guidance documents. I just want to point that out. So next time you see a Department of Commerce employee or if you know one, just let them know, it's much appreciated. Except we don't get ORCA's in Talmater. By the way, Erica, this one was looking for you. Talked a little bit about the checklists, so anyway. And then the whole host of other useful state guidance materials. I will not go through each of these now, but you will see bits and pieces of these as we roll out the discussions on each of the individual elements. There is a lot here to do. There is a lot here to deal with. In terms of our phase and how we're approaching all this, we're using the overall timeline that we outlined in the public engagement plan to sort of guide this whole process. So for community outreach in your memo, I've outlined some of the initial things that we're going to be taking on. I had conversations this morning with our communications folks. We are, they are going to help us draft content for our new comp plan update website. We have an address. We just need to actually plug on all the content. That's where we'll have the links to materials and all the meeting materials. I think we've been discussing having something similar to the Tree City USA, I mean, the Tumwater Tree City website that we use for the urban forestry updates. I thought that was pretty effective and pulling everything into one place that's easy to understand. We're also working on our email lists and other contact lists. And so all of that is occurring as part of the community outreach. And we're going to be start rolling out dates and so forth, starting next month for open houses, coffees and other things. In addition to not only the planning commission meetings and the general government committee meetings that we're going to be having, we'll be having outside public things as well. We've talked about the gap analysis a little bit. Staff will be working on that through September. We're basically taking a look at what we have and making sure, you know, we identify everything that needs to be updated as part of that process. We filed today for the commerce grant, as I was all excited to tell you earlier. I'm still excited about that. It will probably take us into the fall to get the contracting and all that sorted out. Data collection will be tied in primarily to that commerce grant because we're going to be using that to, for transportation. That will be a huge data gathering point. As well as for economic development, we'll be putting some money towards updating our worksheet, workbook that was created for that. And then we have the housing capacity work that has just started as well. The housing capacity analysis is, we're working with all the other jurisdictions in the county to basically sort out how much, how much housing we need to accommodate in the city and how that spreads out all over all income groups. So we have a specific number. That number is assigned by the state to the counties. And then there's the process by the county board of commissioners approves the final numbers that go out to everybody. We do have, under the countywide planning policies, a process for allocating population for, on the land use side in general. We're going to use the same process for allocating the housing. That's a, it's going to be, we have about five meetings already scheduled with TRPC and the other jurisdictions to argue and wrestle and whatever else we need to do to get the numbers to work out. So if I appear to be bloody in September and October, that's why. Just let you know, I'm working on my German suplex moves and other things to. A lot of the data that we're going to need for housing is going to come out of that process. And so that's why we're going into early spring of next year before we really have all the data. We talked a little bit about format of the updated plan. We'll be working on that now. We'll probably show you some mockups of what we think we're going to do before we submit. Gap analysis is going to cover everything. So I think we're going to start with the periodic update. We're going to probably do our own in addition forms to cover the 2023 state legislation, the, all the things we think we need to update because of our, you know, updated conditions within the city that aren't necessarily state requirements we update and so forth. But we'll have one document that covers all of those things. Mentioned that regulations will be covered. Revenue and finance chapter title will be covered because of that's where impact fees for parks and transportation and schools are addressed. So we need to update those based on changes of state law. We're also going to have to update Title 14, our development code administration chapter. We have some, we had some pretty strict state guidelines about how long we have to review applications and turn them around. So if somebody comes in with a permit application, we have specific deadlines we have to hit. We can't just sit on something. We don't, but we have to turn it around within a certain amount of time. The state updated those this past year and shortened the times more and added a whole bunch more requirements, so now we need to update that section. I haven't figured out yet, number one, what all their changes really mean and how we're actually going to translate that into our code yet. So don't ask me about that one yet. We're still working on it. We talked about 1617. We're going to also have to update our citywide design guidelines, primarily the application of them. The state code, well, the state legislation had some changes related to affordable housing this year that put more boundaries on what we can and can't do on the design review side of things for housing. I think we're in decent shape for the most part, but we're going to have to make some tweaks to what we currently do. Similar to that, our development guide will probably have to be updated a little bit to deal with similar issues. We've talked about all the things we're going to look at. I don't think that has changed that much. And we're going to, this is the, also the schedule of review for the planning commission. So these are the dates that we're going to be bringing things to you to start talking about. It's mostly the initial meetings, we're going to sort of test this out. The August 8th meeting will be focusing on the land use element. And my intent is really to make sure that you are comfortable and understand with what the current land use element has, what kind of things are in it, how you could find out information, all those kinds of things. We're presenting some more guidance materials for you to look at as so it will be used throughout this update. But really, this is sort of the general, here's what we have now. Here's the general things we're going to be updating for each of the elements and start discussions about how we may start to look at doing that. Starting next year, we'll take up the elements in the actual amendments themselves to the elements. So you, we'll start first by introducing what each of the elements does, talking in general terms about the updates, what we want to cover, what, as we do this, what things do we need to go out more to the public on? Because, you know, you identify, you want to do this, have you talked to so and so? Have you talked to this neighborhood? Have you talked to this group? This is kind of what I'm envisioning this first part to be. We're breaking the land use element over two meetings because it's a big thing. It's a big chunk of things to deal with. And the housing element, similar, similar structure. We'll do an initial introduction, second meeting in August, and then the second meeting in September will go into more detail. For that second meeting in September for the housing element, we're going to have somebody, Laura Hudson from the Department of Commerce, who is their housing, senior housing planner, will be coming to give a presentation on all the things that we'll be updating. And this will be a great opportunity to ask questions. So as we can, and if you think we need to look for other folks to bring in from the outside, you know, say, well, wait a minute, I don't, you know, city staff needs help, you know, we need more information, city staff may not be able to provide it. Who else can we bring in to talk? Let us know and we'll make arrangements for them to come in and do that. So that's, this is sort of the trial run of that. In October, we'll start talking about the initial development code amendments, the scope of all those things. We'll talk also a little bit about, in the second meeting of October, about the climate element. I have to read the state legislation again, but in 2023, we are required to now include a climate element as part of our comprehensive plan. Before, in fact, the governor had struck that out of the previous year as a requirement. So we didn't have to do it, but we were going to do it by spreading out over the entire document. I need to double check the legislation to see if we can still do that. I don't really want to do a separate climate element because we have a climate action plan. We have an adaptation plan. We have a mitigation plan and a sustainability plan. We don't need another thing doing the same thing. What we need is just to do it. And, you know, my arguments don't necessarily carry much water, but we'll talk a little bit how we're going to do that once staff actually reads again the legislation and figures out what we were going to do or can do. So we'll start those discussions then. Conservation element will take up. Again, we talked a little bit about what that contains. Austin Ramirez, our economic development manager, will be helping us with updating the economic development plan. I expect he will be coming in, I think I've already invited him, to the November meeting. We'll deal with plans for public purposes and utilities together because they're related. In the transportation plan, Mary Heather Ames, our transportation manager, will be coming in. And I'm hoping at that time, we also have our consultant on board for that work so they can come in and we could start the conversation of, you know, the direction we need to go to update the transportation plan. Each of the work sessions, again, the larger questions of how do we, to bring in, incorporate diversity and equity and inclusion throughout the document, there are very specific guidelines about how we need to address this as part of the housing element. In fact, the Commerce recently published guidance, 70 pages of guidance about how to do this. And I'm laughing because I haven't had the chance to actually read through all the guidance and determine what we have to do and how we're going to do it. But I think it makes total sense for us to make, to take that guidance that was intended primarily for the housing element and just extend it across everything to make sure that we're, you know, consistent and doing what we said we wanted to do in the first place. We'll also cover, again, the general topics. There's, in your staff report, we started lists of all the topics that we'll address by individual element. We also included a list of things that we're going to address throughout the plan initially. We'll talk about those. Again, I refer you to the memo for all the details on what's in there. Phase two will start January of next year. And again, the outside the community outreach efforts will continue throughout the process. We're going to ask Commerce to take a look at the planned format that will develop this fall in the spring. And then we'll start individual element meetings with the planning commission and general government about the specific changes and language changes in each of those elements. As part of your packet, I believe there was a meeting agenda. In that meeting agenda, I've laid out your agendas all the way through the end of '24. I hope you have any, if you have any vacation plans, let me know because we can make adjustments as we need to. You'll notice it's already full for the most part. Similar, we'll do the same thing with the development code amendments. Where, in phase three, we'll be starting the actual adoption of the plans themselves and elements. So it'll be fairly focused discussions in November of '24 and on of the entire document in one gigantic swoop. The whole idea here is we break it down into small parts. So by the time we get to the gigantic thing, which we have to include as part of the ordinance, so you'll, that's another reason why I'm so grateful we could do this by PDF rather than printing out. We have to include the whole thing in one gigantic packet. As part of this, we'll be preparing the individual ordinances. The ordinances need to be, there'll be two ordinances, one that deals with the comprehensive plan, one that deals with development code. They have to be separate. We'll do CIPA review and commerce review on both of those. Again, June 30th or '25 or bust. So I'm putting together my resume for July 1st to '25, just in case. Again, any comments, questions? We have a comp plan that, see tumwater.wa.us update email. And we'll be sure to hopefully have the website in shape by, if not by the 8th, by the 22nd to walk you through that. So any questions on any of the materials that we dumped on you? Number one, was it way too much? Was it okay? Nobody screamed, nobody, we didn't have many absences today, so I was counting on that. Let me know. The funds that were, the $125,000 that we're going to get from Commerce will be going towards for consultants to help us update the transportation plan. That's going to be very data heavy, so that's going to require a lot of outside labor, essentially to pull all that together. A much smaller component of that will be the update to the data set for the economic development plan. I don't think we're going to have much of anything left over to cover outside help on the other elements. So I'm really looking forward to Erica doing the work. But yeah, I think you're looking at the staff who's going to be doing it. I take that back. We will be having help from Alex. Alex Baruch is one of our associate planners who currently is in, primarily in permit. But as part of our cross-training efforts, we're going to be bringing him on to help with the portions of the comp plan update. Erica, in turn, will be helping out with some development review as well because we're a small department and if we lose one person for any reason, sickness or some other reason, we want to make sure that we have people who understand processes. So Alex will be helping out. He'll probably be working on some specific elements. We're going to talk about that tomorrow. And then Mike Matlock will also be forcibly dragged into the process. He said he was willing to help and we're going to make him, make him help. So that's, those are the primary planning staff that we're going to be drawing from. I anticipate we'll be able to also use our sustainability coordinator for things on support for the climate element or climate additions as we do. Alyssa Jones would be the person helping with that. And then Mary Heather will be helping with the transportation element. Austin will be helping with the economic development. We're always open to volunteers. We have talked about an intern. We haven't identified a funding source for that at the moment, so.
Particularly in phase one, when we're doing a lot of the gap analysis work, and those are all work sessions with the. Per se, but is there, is there an opportunity to promote those more than usual so that we maybe get, or try to get a little more public engagement during this phase?
Yeah, I think you hit on a very important component. Especially at the planning commission meetings, the work sessions will be, they're always open to the public. But it's also, we want to do double duty as much as we can. So we have discussions with the planning commission. We also want the public involved, have the ability to, you know, read the material, listen to the material, provide questions, all those kinds of things as part of this. Pardon me. And we're working with our communication staff about how to, how to do that, how to notify people and let them know. I have a suspicion it will come into play much more next year when we're actually dealing with the changes, proposed changes and ways to deal with that. But we definitely want to have these sessions during the fall and so forth also serve the same purpose. Again, if it becomes too much, please let me know. I don't want to dump a bunch of stuff on you and it just, you just can't do it.
But it's important and maybe that's a key thing to always remind ourselves that I were doing it before, you know, you have to require it, but you know, what are we trying? You know, you have to require, but you know, what are we trying? All right, then, no more, no more. Brad, let's see, our next meeting will be August 8th. You've covered some of that, and just materials, thinking of.
No, just that we're currently working on the packet of materials for that.
I did want to follow up real quick about the water systems. Do water, so the fire hydrants, do you get evaluated? It looks like for its insurance classification, and so that's something that the fire department usually is the lead on. They do have kind of a scheduled water system maintenance, whether it's maintenance that happens weekly, every three years, annually, but just different parts of the inspections. But it is for insurance to cover the fire hydrants. Yeah, there's a rating, they get evaluated on those. So I just wanted to follow up on that. Yeah.
We're at that point in the meeting where. You'll be adjourned. All right.
My second.
All favor of adjourning tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good.